It is three o'clock and if I'm, if you know that we are connected Kevin, we will begin our meeting. All right, first of all, as I want to, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your willingness to meet today and the importance of doing this. We haven't had a specially called meeting with a three hour response notice in advance of it for a long, long time that I can remember. And I also want you to know that as I think about commissioners to go through something like this with, I can't imagine people that I'd rather do this with and through. So I want to thank you as a commission during what's a very, very hard time for everyone. And I want to recognize how much I appreciate the responses you have made to people who are very concerned about this scenario in which we find ourselves. And we are all a little stumbling in it because we don't know the rate of change and we don't know all the certainties and the uncertainties that we are contending with. And that's unusual. So it's on this space and Commissioner Franklin this morning really initiated what I was so grateful. I don't remember a night I probably wrestled more than last night with some of the, the deep concerns of our constituencies. And I suspect that's true for several of you as well. And so I thank you for caring that much. And I know it's wonderful to serve alongside people who do. So Commissioner Franklin, thank you for initiating this. And then what has worked wonderfully is that Governor DeSantis has created a new executive stay at home order for the state of Florida to be effective on Thursday. And that many of you have been notified of, but we don't know the contents of. That executive order solves the problem of our county not participating in that earlier because now we are going to be doing that unified as a state. We don't know definitionally all the elements of that on an essential business versus non-essential business. And we will spend a lot of tomorrow parsing through that. On the first read, it looks pretty broad in terms of the businesses that are allowable and definable that should do the things, people that would normally expect to be able to serve in essential areas are going to be in that position. But we'll have to parse through that. So today is not a day and in the, in audience comments, it's not a time to talk about any of those issues. Because we don't, we haven't had enough time to decipher them yet. And so to the extent that that could be a question, we would really request that happen tomorrow, not today. After we've had a chance to do one when we, or Friday, when we have our next meeting. Our goal is to also be able to support the citizens in terms of exercise while not necessarily having it be as broad as we may have defined. So one of the things, two things we're going to do in this meeting is talk about what we do with respect to the park decision we made earlier this week. And the second one will then be how do we effectively enforce that and talk through that discussion? So we'll look for a lot of lead from our city attorney Palmer in this as we go through that. When we get to public comments, we're going to limit public comments to two minutes. And then I'm going to ask one additional thing if you could. If someone has pretty much summarized the point from which you, or the point you want to argue or the case you want to make. We would encourage you to let that suffice it as registered. Now, if you need to speak or you want to add anything, that's fine. But, but to the extent possible, we'd like to keep that concise in terms of the way that it comes through. And the last thing, there's two other things I'd like to say with respect to this and then we'll get going. One is the time expectancy that, yeah, Commissioner Franklin.
I'm honestly Kevin there, but I've gotten some feedbacks and someone texting that the message going out is garbled. So I don't know if Kevin, if you're getting that feedback or not.
My, my conversation's garbled?
From people in the audience outside that are listening in, apparently it's garbled.
All right. Is it clear to you? Okay. So I don't, so that must be, yes, Kevin.
It's going to be their internet connection. This is all internet. So unless they're watching on spectrum 643 where it's all our service. If it really depends on the provider of those watching at home, if they're watching it streamed.
Okay. At least what we're recording then is going to certainly be clear as we go forward. Okay. So I appreciate that. Commissioner Walker, was that what you wanted to say as well? Or you have something else? Go ahead. If you can unmute, sir.
Yes, sir. If I have something else that is aligned with what I guess maybe the direction you're heading into, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me, oh, go ahead.
Well, you're the facilitator. Should I continue or not?
All right. Let me, let me finish and then I'll call on you to add that. Okay? If you could. So I kind of lost where I, where I was in my text. I apologize for that. Oh, I wanted to make a comment too, that it's not related necessarily to our commission, but it relates to a lot of our people within Polk County. Citrus Connection has had some constriction, by the way, in the process of all this. They are going to make an announcement on Friday and then it will reflect some changes that are going to have become an impact on Monday. So they'll make an announcement Friday on Rouse on Monday, where they're doing some contraction of Rouse. But the services provided generally speaking will be covered. And I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that as it's forthcoming. So it is in that vein, then I think that we can address the issues at hand. And again, I am so grateful for a commission to do this with. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Walker, do you have an additional comment you'd like to make?
I'm trying to get there with his mouse.
All right.
But in your opening statement, when you mentioned about the executive order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I know you said we'll dive into certain details, I guess, unless I'll see the attorney. And his comments already shared with us how I guess somewhat is, I don't want to cut it dry, but at least you know, giving you some direction for the orders he's given for the state. My question to Palmer, I guess, in that particular vein is because you're saying stay at home. He says in his order, safer at home. And I know there's two differences based on what I'm reading for the National League of Cities. When it comes to the difference between stay at home, safer at home, or shelter at home. So with the governor's order saying safer at home, I think we need to ensure that we understand our, and not only us, but our citizenry understand difference between that and stay at home. Because there is a difference.
Yes, there is. And I apologize for saying stay at home. I meant safer at home in my comments. And the difference is broader. It's safer at home and more, and more tolerant, but a good restriction. Palmer, would you like to comment on that?
I wouldn't get too hung up on what you call it. If you read the actual order, I mean, it is explicit that all persons in Florida shall limit their movements and personal interactions outside of their home to only those necessary to obtain or provide essential services or conduct this activity. So it's, it's mandatory. I use the term shall. And furthermore, if you, the, the Florida statute, granted the governor, his emergency powers makes a violation of any of his orders or second degree misdemeanor. So I think his order has binding effect.
Sure. Commissioner Walker.
And I agree with you Palmer, because I know even in, in section three of the order, it says what those essential activities would be. So it lists those things saying, you know, what the essential activities are. But do we have as a commission, if we, if we have our meeting tomorrow to say anything different than what the order is saying?
Well, the order allows you to be more restrictive, but not more permissive as to in the definition of what's an essential business for essential activities. So and I don't want to get too far ahead of where we are here, but one of the things that is listed as an essential activity and the reason, go ahead Kevin, I'm sorry.
Palmer, you need your headset. And everyone who's got a headset, if you'll pull your microphone a little bit closer, but Palmer, you're the, you're the one, when you speak, you're, you're the most garbled.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's better.
Yes, sir.
Not of course, from a legal standpoint.
One of the things that is listed in this executive order as an essential activity is participating in recreational activities. It does say consistent with social distancing guidelines. Then it has a non-exclusive list of walking, biking, hiking, fishing, hunting, running, or swimming. So that still leaves open the question that we, you know, are calling a special meeting about as to what, what recreational activities, what city facilities we're going to allow to remain open to the purposes of that.
One of the benefits we have is that this also creates enforceability, which is wonderful from the standpoint, Commissioner Franklin, that you brought up this morning. Which is, you know, how do we make it so that it's possible for LPD to be able to be equipped? And that's the second part of our agenda today. All right. With that in mind, then I want to make one last comment for people who may not know what the call in number is and don't see a reference to it. It is, if for audience comments, when we get there, it is eight seven two three four twelve. That's eight seven two two four zero three four twelve. And those comments need to be two things, limited to two minutes and appropriate words that are good civil use of your language in the process. And if I could, Kevin Cook, go ahead.
And those individuals calling in on eight seven two two four zero three four one two will need to use the access code two seven five seven four six two one three. That access code again is two seven five seven four six two one three. We're also being told that our YouTube link is coming in loud and clear. And I'll be providing that YouTube link in just a second. I'm having someone provide it to me via text right now.
Very good. Well, then that takes us to the first item on the agenda, which is to address the parks decision that we discussed earlier. That recommendation really should probably follow on a motion. It should follow a motion that's been seconded from someone who was on the majority side of that decision in our last meeting. So. Would anyone like to take that in? Commissioner Madden.
So it's my assumption that we are going to only allow, open those things that fit within the governor's shelter in place or safer in place.
Yeah, Kevin, excuse me, Commissioner Madden, Kevin, we have a caller that I think is not muted.
Do we?
There we go. They left. But you might want to watch the screen for that. Okay, Commissioner Madden, continue. I apologize.
Sure. So I was assuming that today we would just be making a motion to only keep open the trails and recreational activities that follow the guidelines in the governor's executive order.
Which would, and, and for those of you who have not seen the executive order, that excludes courts. I think, are you talking about excluding golf and?
Looks like from the last time, it would be removing golf, removing tennis, pickleball. I don't have last Monday's motion with me. I apologize.
The dog park would be the only question that I would ask. And is that part of that space in your mind?
No, it does say that you can walk your dog in the, and take care of pets.
This is a particular matter. Was there a motion in a second to reconsider Monday's decision?
Oh, okay. Is that what you need to do first, Palmer?
Yes.
Okay, I move to reconsider the decision on Monday regarding parks.
Commissioner Walker, you have a second. All right. Motion, a second. Let's open discussion. All right, Commissioner McLeod, I can see you'd have some discussion here.
Mr. Mayor, you're, just to clarify that in the governor's order, courts, there are specific things that are automatically removed from consideration. Is that what I'm, just to make sure that I understand that and other people understand that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Walker.
My, my question, oh, my, I guess, not so much my question, but my comment would be based on what the governor's order is and saying that we remove those things that we initially, I guess, placed into our motion as it was on Monday. That motion got approved on Monday. The only thing that's left there is what I guess was, Commissioner Madden has mentioned, as mentioned in the executive order. You still can have the walking, biking, those kinds of things already, boating, fishing, running, and taking care of pets. So if that's his order, then we would need to make sure, as I see it, to make sure we fall in line with the executive order is.
There is another area where we don't align and we are more strict already, and that is in the closing of pools. It does allow for swimming in the executive order. We would not open the pools back up. We've closed the pools and we've closed all the restrooms and everything that are related in that direction. And we would continue to keep that. That's different. Commissioner McCarley.
So is caring for your pets allowing the dog park to open? Because I don't feel like that Palmer is really clear. And I would think walking your dog in your neighborhood is one thing. A dog park is something different, but I could be wrong.
No, I agree with that, that that's not necessarily encompassed by caring for your pet.
So I think that's a good area for us to have some discussion on. You know, there, there are people who can stay at distance in a dog park from other people. But, you know, there can be a lot of people at the dog park. And it's great for the dogs to be able to run, but can they run somewhere else? Comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, Mayor, I would propose that we amend Commissioner Madden's motion to frame this as, we would like to comply with the governor's directive with the exception that we would dial it back to not include swimming pools and dog parks.
And that just keeps us fluid. You're talking about in terms of what we do. Yes. And swimming in dog parks are the exclusions. I'll amend it.
If I may.
City Attorney Palmer.
I don't think that the executive order is that clear on, on other recreational activities that are banned. So I think your, your motion probably would need to address some other things like the golf course, tennis courts. Your intention for those to not be open.
Okay, we have some feedback. Yeah, Commissioner Walker. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Walker. City clerk, do you have a point?
If we get a second on the, in the motion, I don't recall hearing a second.
Mr. Mayor, there's not actually, there's not actually a motion to be amended yet. Commissioner Madden moved to reconsider.
Yes.
We voted on that.
We have not voted on that yet. No, ma'am.
Kelly, I'm sorry. This is very clunky, but the way the Roberts rules works is that once you have a motion and a second and a vote to reconsider a motion, then that motion is then back under consideration. So we're back where we were before the vote on Monday on that motion. So you can either amend it or the person who made the motion can withdraw it and the second can withdraw. You can start the draft or you can simply amend it.
And having gotten that second, we can redefine that motion and then the singular vote encompasses that all. Correct?
Yes, yes.
All right. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Walker. Oh, Commissioner Madden, sorry.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Palmer, but I think it would be taking off golf court, pickleball, tennis courts, dog parks. Am I missing anything?
Pool, no, but pools would, we didn't have before, we didn't have it before, we wouldn't include it. Okay. Yes, City Manager Delgado. You're still muted, sir. Still muted. Hit that little red mic with your clicker. You might go down to Commissioner Franklin's office or Madden's really fast. If you want to make your comments. You're muted, sir. Okay. We'll just take one second since we now, Commissioner McLeod.
Boat ramps were also part of the group in our original motion on Monday.
Correct, but they were not limited by the executive order.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Franklin?
And I guess we're looking for a second to Commissioner Madden's motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a second and I think we need some more discussion.
All right. Would you like to be in it?
Sure. As far as the golf courses go, this is something I've been thinking about since, since we met on Monday. I would, I do have concern that, you know, I thought more about what Commissioner McCarley was saying as far as the use of disinfectant on the golf court, the golf carts. I think in this time where we don't know what the demand's going to be, it seems frivolous to be wasting them, disinfecting every time someone gets off a cart. I also was thinking too, that considering our, our demographic that ought to be sheltering in place. I would say if someone isn't up to walking right now, they probably ought to think about not playing golf. I would be, I would be more comfortable supporting the golf car course if we limited it to walking only and no golf carts. And that would save on disinfectant and it would reduce the exposure of our staff cleaning the carts. And it would also keep people farther apart. I know there's a challenge and City Manager Delgado and I discussed it. It's a little harder for LPD to enforce things on a golf course. But just, you know, knowing from playing golf, when you're out walking, the last thing folks are going to want to do is congregate when you're walking. Because if anything, they're scattered all over a hundred acres of land out there and they're not going to be. So I would be willing to walk.
Could I ask for an expert comment on that from Bob Donahue? Any comments from your perspective, sir?
Yes, walking is a great solution. We would be definitely up for that. And you're right, you're spot on. Well, every, every comment you just meant, you just said was spot on. Walking will disseminate the crowd. There will be spread out a lot more if you're trying to achieve a walking trail atmosphere at the golf course. And also the disinfectant and all that that goes with it. I think that's a great idea. And it's something that, that we strongly would be, would support and encourage happens.
By the way, let's make sure we're muted if we're not talking. It also is a good way for me to see who wants to talk as well. Commissioner Walker.
My, my subject now, my comment now is not referencing golf course, but pretty much walking. And what we've been hearing and getting a lot of concern about, you know, when it comes to Lake Hogsworth Trail and the walking and how many people in that particular area or that particular part of the trail, as we call it. How can we, that maybe we didn't hear from law enforcement in a sense, how can we make sure that we can govern or have to make sure we were not having more than a crowd of more than what should be in the six, this has been kept. And I mean, that's, that's, that's one of the concerns I have with the walking part of what we're, we may, it may as part of this motion. Because we're still having a trial, challenge. If I hear, what I'm hearing. Because we still having a trial, challenge I have if I hear, what I'm hearing and reading, what I'm getting from people of that kind of a crowd, and how can we control it?
So I, one of the ways that would be easy for round one to help control it is to ban the parking on the grass alongside the trail and, and make it so that it's enforced, so that people don't park there. That would reduce the number of people that have proximity, you know, to the trail. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. I'm assuming that we're looking at this executive order 20-91, is that what we're going by today? And if I look in on page four, it's somewhat confusing. Again, it looks like all these essential activities are allowed. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
So that does, that does allow for golfing and walking and fishing and hunting and, and your dog parks, it appears to me. And so I'm just, again, either this needs to be put on our webpage, or we need to either put these in our document or omit them.
Well, I think from our standpoint, what we're trying to do is ascertain what we want to apply, how, how we wanted to find that within Lakeland. Certainly, we have to be consistent with the recommendation. We can't be any broader than that. But we might be tighter than that if we so chose. And then I think Commissioner, or City Manager, almost again, Delgado, actually has his mic going, but you need to unmute yourself first, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go ahead and reiterate, based upon what we're reading in this executive order, golfing is a prohibited activity. It's not specifically designated in this executive order. Once again, as Palmer noted, it's walking, biking, hiking, fishing, hunting, running, and swimming. Those are, those are what is specifically outlined in this Section 3A2 of this executive order.
That shortens our conversation.
I don't do that as a, an exclusive list. That's only an example of some things that are allowed. So I don't think that, that section of the executive order forecloses other recreational activities.
Commissioner McCarley?
So Palmer, just for clarification, what you're saying is it's not defining it for us. This is still ultimately up to us of what we're going to keep open, what we're going to close. That can be, if it's, it has to be less permissible than the state. We have to follow those guidelines, but they're guidelines. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. I, I don't think that section necessarily precludes a golf course being open and people playing golf. I think that the city commission has the authority to be more restrictive than this executive order. The executive order says that.
So going back to the motion, thank you. So going back to the motion at hand, we are, are we clear on, can we, somebody reread that motion to me of what we're, if we're going to include, what we're including, what we're not including? Or are we just not yet to vote to, to remove the original motion from Monday?
Okay, so Commissioner Madden, if you could try and script in a little bit of, based on this conversation, you have the best grasp, that would be great.
So originally, it was our parks and trails, plus golf, tennis, pickleball, boat ramps, dog parks. So I was thinking, according to the executive order, that it would be everything that we said Monday, except golf, tennis, pickleball. And then I guess the variable is the dog park and the golf depends on this conversation that we're having. So I don't know if I should just make a firm motion and then have it be seconded, and then amend it to take off golf, you know, add golf back in, or whatever, depending on the comments of the group.
We already have made a motion that was seconded, which included eliminating golf and.
Okay.
Dog parks. So we, so that's where we are now. Further discussion, Commissioner McCarley, unmuted?
So, okay, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what we're saying. If we're, we are going to exclude the golf cars, course, or we're still up for discussion on the golf course, if we are up for discussion on it, I'm wondering if that's going to have more unintended consequences, just like what we've seen around Lake Hollingsworth. If it's still included, even as a walking area. And just a note, and, and one of the many emails that I received and feedback from Monday's vote that you all received as well, and I don't know if you got this one, but just a, you know, one thought is, it's not only that people are trying to get out and exercise, but all the gyms are closed. So that onslaught of people at Lake Hollingsworth might not be, you know, some of that might be using it as their own gym. So even if other trails are opened back up, maybe they can access those other trails, and it will disperse people out. But I just found that, that wasn't something that I thought about on Monday as the onslaught at Lake Hollingsworth being a result of closing the parks necessarily as, as much as, you know, the government had already closed, the state government had already asked for gyms to be closed. Just an FYI.
Yes, and that would be a good thing for us in communications to highlight whatever we settle on, to make sure people know where there are walking trails and those kinds of things as we go along, for them to exercise. Commissioner McCloud?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we do decide to leave the trails open, I, I agree with some of the comments I've heard about. I think we have to find a way to limit people congregating around Lake Hollingsworth. And when I listened today, I know many of you were on the call with the White House led call, and Dr. Fauci was talking about the next two weeks, really being critical in limiting unnecessary movement and people gathering in crowds. And he just, he stressed that over and over, and I want to make sure that we take that seriously. And I know that's hard, because we all love Lake Hollingsworth, we love that path. But I would, I'd love to hear from Bob or others. Are there ways that we can enforce social distancing and make sure that's happening? Or do we need to consider shutting down the trail for a, a limited period of time? As hard as that may be, but I would like us to talk that through.
City Manager Delgado?
Obviously, the, the key concern is how many people actually can, are getting there from other areas of the community. I think one of the things that we would have to do if you were trying to limit the exposure to Lake Hollingsworth is not allow people to park. Obviously, somebody wants to walk their dog, but not allow people to park lakeside. I think that is one, one thing that can be done. You know, people have talked about everybody moving in clockwise or counterclockwise around the lake. That's always tough to kind of, to manage. And we would have to have a tremendous amount of staff out there to go ahead and facilitate that. We can also put some barriers up on the lake that would, that would modify how people utilize it, that being fencing of some sort, that could actually close down the lake if necessary. But I think it, it's very difficult without staff to be there to act as a, as a guide for the people that are there, unless, unless, of course, you're either going to close it, or we can modify the parking. My biggest concern about parking, and I, I really don't want to say this because I'm going to give people ideas, but there, I'm concerned about parking on side streets. I'm concerned about utilizing other facilities to park and then get to, get to Lake Hollingsworth. So, but the first thing I could think of right off the bat is to limit parking around the lake.
Commissioner Walker?
And again, that's, that, that is my concern as well regarding the control. And do we have manpower? Do we have, you know, issuing something with law, maybe permitting law enforcement to do some things to support, you know, the, the crowd being lessened, or people not being in mass numbers as it would be? And I would agree with you all. I walk north Lakelands, and I don't see the, the kind of crowds. Maybe it's, maybe it's because, you know, people don't walk in North Lake, I don't know. I don't see it. I'm walking three miles plus usually, even, and was glad to know that we was going to have possibly Douglas Cook opened up and around Sisal Park, the Bella Vista Trail opened up. But I, I don't see that, those kind of, and I walk, and I don't see it. So I guess, again, it's a jewel that we have here in our city called Lake Hollingsworth, and Lake Hollingsworth Trail, that maybe have brought about the numbers that we're seeing and we're having to deal with. But how, again, how we can control it? If we're going to allow trails to be open, and if we can't control it, I'll be able to have some kind of measure in place, then I'm obviously the one to say, let's not do it at all. Because I'm concerned about, again, what we know has been shared with our medical providers and the medical professional people saying how we can help, you know, curve, help, you know, lessen the curve or bring the curve down, I should say.
Commissioner Walker, I think that's our good comments. You know, this comes down to personal responsibility. At some point in time, we want this to kind of be more passive in terms of the way it has to be enforced, so that I would think we don't want to have to utilize people from parks and recs to be able to, to.
You're frozen, Mayor.
Required to do that. So if we can make some passive steps, like eliminating parking along the lake, to be observing the six foot distances as they may require. Chief Garcia, in some comments, you might think with respect to this as well. But after I listen to Kevin Cook, just one second.
Mayor, you're, you're, you're freezing, and we didn't hear your, your full statement, the last one. I don't know if you've got a lot of devices running at your house, but if you could have some individuals start turning some things off, that would be super awesome.
All right, am I clear now?
Better.
Am I clear now? I'm asking, just give me a minute. No? Yes? I am, or I am not? Okay. Chief Garcia, could you comment on some of the practical ways we could handle Hollingsworth?
Yes, sir, good afternoon. Mostly through education, that is a huge area to expect to close off without a considerable amount of fencing. So education would be the first way we would go. Hoping that we would have a public that would be agreeable. Once they knew not to come to the lake, or to limit their exposure to the lake, they would follow that recommendation or actually executive order to not do that. So that would be our first move. We talked with Bob about using some fencing and barricades to create some points where it wouldn't be as attractive to walk around the lake. So we could certainly take that, that direction as well. Now, what we come down to, those police officers are no different than hand sanitizer or M95 masks. We have a finite amount of them, and it's where we want to use them at. So while we certainly continue to make our rounds and try to get the word out, I don't know that's where you want us to use those resources on the lake.
Ruben, if you could move closer to your laptop when you're talking. Yeah, let's see that face. There you go, get real close.
Okay.
So we can hear, that's much better, thank you.
Did, did you hear any of my comments? Okay.
Mayor Proton Franklin, it looks like we've lost Mayor Muttz. You might have to step up.
Mayor, can you hear me at all? Thumbs up or thumbs down if you can hear? Okay, I guess he can't hear. While he's still working that, one of the, hold the moment there, Commissioner Walker. You know, as we've struggled to find this balance between total shelter in place versus, you know, giving people some freedom to get out of their homes and try to get some exercise and sanity, which I think is going to grow increasingly important as we do this for another month or so. This isn't a perfect analogy, but one that has kind of come to mind to me is that, you know, we, we lose despite our best efforts about 40,000 people a year in auto crashes. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to stop driving cars, we need to do that. But we've identified things that are risks associated with that, like DUIs, running red lights, speeding, seat belts, texting and driving. And we have implemented measures to mitigate the risk. And I think that's, I would hope that the public would, would bear with us as we look at this and think, what are some things we can do to take social distancing and make it more effective? Because the government has said clearly that social distancing is very effective. And if we look in places that have flattened the curve, it is that social distancing that's made the distance or the difference. And if we can find some measures that will allow people to be treated responsibly like adults and law-abiding citizens, and, and police themselves, then that'd be great. And, and I think we should try to do that. But for the same reason, you know, that we, we have the LPD, we have police. If everyone followed the rules, we wouldn't need the police department, but we have them. And that's why, that was one of the reasons I wanted to get back together and think, you know, could we give authority to LPD? And, and I agree, Chief, that information is going to be a key piece of this, but let people know, listen, if you're a knucklehead out there and you're congregating, we're going to slap you with a civil infraction there. We're going to give you a violation, and I'm all for making it as expensive and as painful as possible, because I think the people who violate this deserve to be punished. But at the same time, I don't think we should treat everyone as though they're going to all automatically break the rules, so we give no one any latitude.
A good comment, Commissioner Franklin. Can you hear me, by the way? Yeah. Commissioner Walker?
And I would tend to agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Franklin, but it's unfortunate that people just don't. And that we will see this already happening, where they're not following the guidelines and ask that we've even put in place and say, hey, if you just follow these guidelines, do what we ask you to do. Keep the, you know, the six feet distance, keep the less than 10 in, in, in a, in a congregated kind of area. But we see it's not happening. So we're at this point now, what do we do? And I would agree, if LPD would have to come along, but I, I've talked with the chief and talked with his, I call his generals. And they're saying, if we have to go and start policing as, this way, it could cause them some challenges, maybe a rippling effect, where they're trying to make sure they're protecting those businesses who have closed as a preventive, so they won't have no problems with their businesses being closed, vandalized, whatever, or broken into, that kind of thing. But now we've got to move toward making sure we got boots on the ground to support people, you know, to do what they should be doing and being asked to do. You know, if it gets to that point, then, you know, even if we're there. And if we are there, then we're supposed to be just cut it, cut it out completely.
Commissioner Reed, and then Commissioner McCarley?
Thank you, Mayor. There again, just this morning, I was driving around a little bit, and of course invariably, Scott's made a valid point, but again, you know, we have our own social network, and we have our, our family unit. And I see couples that I know walking around Lake Hollingsworth, holding hands, husband and wife. And we have your kids, and your husband's got to, or have to hold their kids' hands to keep them running in the road. They have small children on the bicycles and, and it's, you have to kind of, you want to please your own family to obviously keep them safe from harm's way. But invariably, it's going to have to be our own social responsibility for individual care for these rules and regulations that we're going to impose on people. And that's going to be the hard part, and I really don't know how we can really address it other than maybe we, we do walk clockwise. Maybe there's no parking around the lake, you got no parking signs. And of course, there again, you will create parking up and down Belverger Street and a Presbyterian church or, and the colleges closed and the apartment complexes, et cetera. Not giving people ideas, but invariably. Probably am, but, but, you know, there's, there's, it's, it's imperative that we do restrict our, our social contact and, and social distancing one another. But how we do, I really would hate to close down Lake Hollingsworth. It's a, it's a key component for exercise of our majority of our citizens, it appears. Especially if we're going to do something with the golf course. We have plenty of great trails, but invariably, they're not as easily accessible. And parking, and they're, they're usually one way, you have to go one long way, one way and one way back. Whereas you can go around Lake Hollingsworth, it's about a three mile loop. And that's typically a good spot to just, you just start at one spot and stop at your car again. But it's a, it's a fine line we're going to have to address. And I'm not quite sure how we can siphon it, and I really would hate to do that myself.
Well, and I think it is important for us to recognize, right now, we ought to be talking about what we want to include and not necessarily parse how we're going to get it done as we go along. Commissioner McCarley, and then Commissioner. Go ahead, please.
I think, you know, everybody here knows where I was on Monday, and I am staying in that place. So I don't necessarily agree that we need to renege on what we did the week before and opening things up. And I think that's why we're having to have this meeting today. If we maybe have kept them closed one more week, we could have, you know, foregone this meeting. But I want you to realize that we have now spent three meetings talking about parks. Three business meetings discussing parks. Our main concern as a government is public safety. So we should be discussing, we need to decide on this and move on to our next things that will happen on our JED study on Friday that I hope to include as public safety, personal responsibility of our community and what our community needs. I am frankly more concerned right now about how the children of our community are going to be educated when they can't go pick up a device at their school tomorrow or today so they can be educated at home or they don't have parents at home to help them with their virtual education. And we've now spent three meetings on this. I think that we, it's a hard decision to make. I think we're called as leaders to make hard decisions. I think the decision should be is to go back to the original motion that we had last week and extend it for another seven days. If we do need to make an addendum that has to do with Lake Hollingsworth, then let's do that. But I'm a little bit frustrated at the fact that we have spent this many meetings, no offense to Mr. Donahue. I think our Parks and Rec Department does an awesome job, but we are in a different timeframe now. We are in a different world, and I actually don't want to ask LPD to have to educate when I know there are Dixieland businesses getting broken into or residents. They need to be spending time on that. Everyone should have the social responsibility, and I think the great majority of our population is doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think they're abiding by the rules that are called to, you know, stop the spread over this 30-day mark. And I hate to legislate a common sense approach to people. I wish we wouldn't have to do this. I wish, just like Commissioner Franklin said and Commissioner Walker said, that everyone could self-police themselves and make good decisions. But obviously, we are in this predicament because that's not happening. So hopefully, with the state now stepping up to the plate and actually taking some action, and I hope our VOCC, Board of County Commissioners, that our residents are contacting them and that they step up to the plate and support these initiatives, that we're all in this together. The quicker that we kind of shut it down and put it on hold, maybe the quicker we come out of the curve. We do know, the only thing we know right now about this virus is that we can stop it by social distancing. That's the one fact that we know, that we hear consistently on all levels of health and all levels of government. So I would recommend that we let Parks and Rec, or I don't know if we let the city manager, since we gave the emergency order a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago now, that we let him, you know, and his staff decide how everything is going to be shut down and how that's going to be implemented. But for heaven's sakes, I wish we could get to a conclusion on this.
Appreciate your resolve, Scarlett. Commissioner Walker?
You know, and picking back on what you said, Commissioner McCauley, when I made the motion Monday before last to close all parks, it didn't get a second, so it failed. Then, of course, you came along with the motion where we tried, you know, what we did do for the week time span. And that's what we, that's what we did and, of course, brought us to this past Monday to how we move forward. And I tell you, I compromised from the beginning, you know, to say, okay, let's see, being a team player, how we can make it work. I compromised again on this past Monday because I heard, you know, my fellow colleagues saying the challenges that we're having and, you know, let's go ahead and see what we can do to help support, you know, some recreational activity. But then my challenge was, I was hearing it being said for certain parts of our city, not the city as a whole. So that's why I introduced and shared and asked Commissioner Madden to modify our motion to include other particular areas of the city as well. But I'll tell you what, I've been there from day one almost. Close it down. Let's just close it down. And let's see what, you know, many cities are doing it. Many have already done it. The counties parks are closed down. So, you know, we're here, as you said, three times in a row, parks being a subject. Let's just close it down and let's move forward.
Well, consistent, though, with the safer at home is the ability for people to exercise. So I think we have a responsibility on both sides of this. We have to move into what are we comfortable with them doing, what we want our citizens to do and not do. And then we can work on the details as we get there. And so my encouragement would be that we take a look at this motion and decide what we're going to do with it. And if there's pieces that you want to continue to carve off more, we can do so. As it stands, this carves off the golf course and it carves off dog parks and pickleball and tennis. That's as it stands right now. So if we want to make any changes to that, that would be part of what we'd want to consider as well. Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, Mayor. A question for, actually, Commissioner Walker said something that I had seen in some email traffic, and I'd just like some verification. I know the state parks are closed. Is it true that the county parks are also closed? We know this to be true.
Well, we know some trails, our Port Praetor Trail is closed.
But is the county closing their parks? For example, Carter Road Park, places like that?
Yes.
Parks are closed in the county.
Well, I don't know about all the parks, but I can answer Carter Road Park has been closed because I've heard from some people that bike, that they didn't have access to the trails.
So, so based on, I wasn't aware of that. In light of that, I would just like to share something, you know, my thoughts. And based on that knowledge that I wasn't aware of, I would definitely support closing down because I think, I've been under the impression that the higher volume around Lake Hollingsworth is because we shut the rest of our own parks down. People aren't stupid out there. Even in Hillsborough County, if they have a safer-at-home thing and they know they can't go anywhere around their area, but they can get in the car, you know, get some fresh air and drive over to Lakeland and park around Lake Hollingsworth and walk the lake. Or anybody in Polk County, if there's nowhere else they can go, but by golly, they can come to downtown Lakeland and use our parks. I don't think we need that. So if that's the case, I wasn't aware of that. I don't think we should be adversely selected against and be the only place that anyone in central Florida can come and use recreational facilities.
My suggestion would be, since we have a little bit of time by our Friday meeting, if we were going to fine tune this, we could make a decision on what we're going to do because we're talking about April 2nd implementation with respect to what we have in the prior motion that we're reversing in this, to talk about what other, gather some information, find out what some other cities are doing. If we're going to make an additional trail closing and tighten it even more, can you not hear me, Kevin?
No, I'm just verifying. We've got confirmation. All county parks are closed. Just want to let you guys know that. That is confirmed.
And what about, can you get some information, please, on the surrounding counties?
Yes, we'll work on that.
Okay, thank you. And, and so the reality is we have 100,000-plus people here that are going to want to do some level of exercise, and there's going to be some pent-up desire to do that. Where do we want to have that happen? Commissioner Walker?
Mr. Mayor, again, on, back to square one, we got to do what we know is best in keeping this social distancing, or I call it personal distancing, you know, in place. And I do know, because I read a lot of the official comments from other legal cities, and they have, that's, most of them are shut down. The parks are closed. And you walk. I walk on the sidewalks. Maybe every area doesn't have a sidewalk. I thought we have thousands of sidewalk mileage in our city. So why can't we do, not walk in our neighborhoods along the sidewalk as a number of us are doing? I can't say everybody's doing it, but I'm sure, but a lot, numbers are doing that. So what's the challenge with making sure we just shut down? And you get outside your home and walk the sidewalks of your neighborhood or as many of us are doing it as it is?
Communications Director Cook?
Yes, confirmation from Audrey Kane, our emergency manager. She's confirmed that Hillsborough County and Orange County parks are closed as well, all of them.
Okay. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. There again, what are we going to do about Lake Morton and Lake Wire?
And with respect to what, sir?
Well, people are walking those lakes as well.
Well, so if we decide we're going to close all parks, and that would be certainly easy with Three Parks Trail. We, when you look at Lake Hollingsworth, what are you going to do with people that are going to get on after it's been closed? And how do you enforce that? Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to Commissioner Madden's motion, I think it makes sense what is on the table. I do think in terms of the trails, Lake Hollingsworth, I'm on the fence with that. I can see the reasoning behind considering just shutting all of that down for, you know, while we're under this order. But I also see the challenges with that in terms of people, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, will, they will exercise or want to exercise somewhere and may gather in other places that aren't, you know, city trails. And so I think with that, maybe there's some flexibility to discuss that at our Friday meeting as it relates to the trails. I know and I share Commissioner McCauley's frustration about being bogged down in some of the weeds on this. I do think because these are, they're different times, and we've said many times, this is unprecedented. We have not been in a situation like this, that it creates some of these policy conundrums that we're trying to work our way through. And so I'm hopeful that we can continue to struggle through this. I do think the vote Monday was a bit premature to go ahead and try to lift some of those restrictions. But, you know, when I look out across other communities, you see the same struggle that has been playing out. And you see golf courses that have remained open in Hillsborough and Pinellas and Orange Counties that have had stricter stay-at-home orders. And so I think that context is important for people just to know that we have been really struggling through this to try and find the right policy decision. I think the governor's order really helps communities tremendously to give some consistency because now there's uniformity in that. So I guess I go back to supporting Commissioner Madden's motion that's on the table, but with some thought of discussing trails in Lake Hollingsworth, Lake Mir, at our Friday meeting, knowing that those are important venues and they've been venues that have been, you know, with high traffic recently. And that, after hearing the advice coming out of the federal government, Dr. Fauci, to me, that's concerning and that's something we may need to close as well.
Okay, a good comment. And Commissioner Walker?
And we're back to that same question again, Commissioner McLeod. Where is the control measures? We heard our chief police talking about, you know, again, what we thought would be best. We've got to lean on the law enforcement to, you know, to guide us through this particular situation. And if he's telling me that we're, he's having to make sure he has personnel taking care of businesses who are closed so they won't be vandalized, burglarized, broken into, and then we got to take the same personnel that they're being preventive as best they can, you know, keeping our neighborhoods safe as best they can to go and, you know, now take care of trails that folk are not being, you know, responsible as we, as we hoped they would be. That's where, that's, that's mind-boggling to me. We, it's like, okay, you're hearing what other cities are doing. They've shut it down.
Yes, sir. All right, so are there any other comments on this motion? Are there any other comments from the audience? I see we have 13 callers. And as soon as we can, pardon?
So.
Communications Director.
We had a number of callers drop off. I've got the callers subuted right now. If you're ready for that, I'll start bringing the callers up. Are you ready?
Sure, and I just remind them that there's a two-minute limit and they need to state their name as they begin. Please.
Caller, you're on now. Could you state your name? And then you have two minutes to share your thoughts with the city commission.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mayor, thank you so much for your time. I just want to help embolden your decision-making here. I believe the strongest reason that we're lacking compliance is because there is a lack of clarity and consistency with decisions, both local and national. When we do partial closures, when we still have some things open, it tells our population that this is not a big deal. And this is a big deal, especially in our area. We have an older population of the United States, and we have one of the most highly-traffic emergency rooms at Lake Illinois Regional. It was number one out of the nation, and I don't think people are aware of that. So please be strong and forceful with these decisions.
Thank you very much. And could you tell me your name? Because I think I got cut off at the beginning. Please.
Daniel Nutting, N-U-T-T-I-N-G.
Thank you, Daniel, very much, and good thoughts. Next caller, please.
Hang on. Caller, could you please state your name and then share your thoughts with the city commission? You have two minutes.
Gilbert Duffy.
Could you state that again, sir?
Gilbert Duffy.
Gilbert Buffy, thank you, sir. I apologize.
Yes. So is the Cleveland Heights Golf Course closed?
And we have not voted yet on that. It's currently closed and it would have reopened tomorrow, but we may, the part of this vote would close it if it were a firm.
So according to the governor's orders, are other privately owned courses in Polk County open?
Privately owned courses probably are not restricted. Public ones would be.
Okay, so you still have to vote on Cleveland Heights as yet?
Correct.
I, I believe it's wrong to close it. I need the place for exercise. I walk. And I know you're going to have a problem with carts because there are elderly gentlemen who like to play but need to take carts. So you would have a problem there. But as far as myself, I, I play four or five times a week. And it's something that I need because I suffer from depression. So I need to get out there and play. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Very helpful.
City Manager Delgado has his hand.
Um, yes, I didn't know someone was talking. Yes, City Manager Delgado.
You know, Mr. Duffy just made the comment, would other private courses be closed? It's my assumption, based upon this order, that they would not be considered as essential activities unless, of course, the city posed the question if they were to be essential activities. So if you said golf was an essential activity, then that would open the door for those private courses to be open. If you said it's not an essential activity, it's my assumption, and Palmer might be able to weigh in on this, but I assume they would have to close.
So to be consistent, in this motion, if we were to pass it, that would keep it closed. We would have time to be able to see how that gets defined also by Friday to Commissioner McLeod's point. Give us some time to look at any differentiation. Yes, next caller, please.
Caller, if you could address the city commission and state your name first, and then you have two minutes.
They were very quick.
Caller, you're on.
How do you know when you're the caller?
You are the caller, and so if you could state your name, please.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Marshall. How are you today?
Great, Andrea.
I've been watching your meetings since Monday and have become increasingly frustrated at the amount of time you're spending on this parks issue. I'm looking at the executive order right now, and Section 3, it does state that essential activities are limited to the following, which you have already went over, and that does not include golf. But my one take on this is that it does not list in this executive order anywhere that these essential activities must be done at a city or local park. These activities can be achieved by each citizen's choice in their own personal space. We do it every day. I come from a military family. I served. And I have exercised at home, out in the backyard or on my sidewalk or in my neighborhood. You have a responsibility as a city council and opportunity to take the public's health into consideration. What you do not have is the option to not follow the governor's order. It says in Section C, the social gatherings in a public space is not an essential activity and local jurisdictions shall ensure that groups greater than 10 are not permitted to congregate in any public space, any public space. to congregate in any public space, any public space." So as Commissioner Williams, who I tend to disagree with a lot, I, I support what he said. The only way to ensure and enforce this is if you close the parks, okay? Not only that, but if people are mandated to work from home, what makes you think that it's appropriate to go out and exercise and play golf? Also, I would like nonessential employees, city nonessential employees at home to telework.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate your comments very much. Next caller, Kevin.
Hi, um, so.
Caller, could you restate your name, please?
Am I on now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are, sir.
Okay, hi, it's Andre Hall yet again, and as I'm sure many of you have seen on Facebook and other social media outlets, the public is not very on board with many of the opinions that many of the commissioners have spoken about on Monday. And first of all, I would like to thank you, Commissioner McCarley, for being seemingly the only voice of reason since we've had in these past three meetings. And I urge you and support you and encourage you to continue being that strong sense of, or a strong sense that we have missed from the other commissioners. And I could not have agreed more with previous caller Andrea. I spoke almost two weeks ago and had hoped that you guys would make the right decision, but clearly this past Monday, I was sorely mistaken. And it feels like we're not taking the public opinion into serious consideration. You say, "We appreciate your thought," but then we completely disregard what many of the public is saying, whether it be online or in person or today and on, on the phone. We're already, so let me echo once more what I and other dozens of Lakelanders have already expressed. The city is not taking this lightly, and I urge you to consider repercussions that these things have. Why are we keeping these select facilities open? Why would the city of Lakeland not want to lead by example? This has been overwhelmingly unsupported by the general public. Sure, people can remain socially distant on a boat ramp, but I believe you all are sending the wrong message when you encourage people to do the complete opposite. How can we continue to defy what has been recommended by the CDC and federal government? What message are you still sending to the community when we are wanting to find ways for them to go out and about, walk up and down your neighborhood streets? Many people interpret this, the commissioners, as misplaced priorities. Are you all wanting to continue risking lives? This will seemingly take much longer if we continue to have these unneeded conversations, and I urge you to take the public's considerations to heart.
Well, thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, caller, you're on. You have two minutes with the commission. Could you please state your name?
That's Jessica Chris.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I've never spoke in an official capacity or to members of the commission. I would just like to point out that the community is looking in large part to our trusted officials for guidance and for direction. And sadly, it seems as though in the last couple of weeks, we haven't gotten a whole lot of that. I'm hearing a lot from members. I, I was raised here. I, my parents were both raised here before they passed away. And I have, I'm a single mother of five children. I feel like that we need you guys to step up and say more and do more. And I can appreciate your, your positions. I can appreciate that a lot of these decisions are difficult to make and they come with a lot of repercussion. However, we are not to move on from this and rebuild from this until we get on the other side of it. And if we don't get control of it now, we may not for a very, very long time. So I just implore you to let the commu-, get out more into the community, not physically, of course, but get your voices into the community more. Let us know what you're doing because we're not seeing a whole lot of that. And that is echoed quite a bit through social media, which I encourage you all to remember a lot of folks don't have access to. So I thank you for your time and I just implore you to please take action.
Jessica, I can assure you that you're talking to a commission that is equally concerned and it is a little bit uncharted waters, but we're, public safety is more important to us than anything else. All right, next caller.
Caller 15, you are now in front of the City Commission. Could you please state your name? And you have two minutes.
Alyssa Allen, A-L-L-E-J-N. I would have to agree with a caller, I think her name was Andrea. It feels like we are almost taking more priority on people getting out to parks and running and exercising when they won't be able to do that if it's the D system or their family or one of their close friends. We have backyards, majority of us, if not apartment complexes, you can walk around. There's other ways and means of exercise, and I do not believe that playing golf is a mandatory essential item that we should be concerned with. People's lives are at danger here, and if you aren't showing this as a priority and sticking so long on this park issue, then nobody else is going to take this seriously. And when people's lives are being lost and their children's lives are lost because of this not being taken so seriously, there's going to be a lot on other people's hands.
Excellent comments. Thank you very much. Next caller, please. Is there another caller, Kevin?
There's quite a few. Caller, you are now in front of the commission. Could you please state your name? And you have two minutes. Caller?
Hello?
Yes, you.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Krista Schwab, and I'd like, and thank you for listening. I am one of the vulnerable population. I have autoimmune diseases and other health conditions that put me extremely at risk of death from COVID. So I stay at home, but every time my husband has to go out to the grocery store, every time he has to go out and get my medications, that's putting him at risk of catching it and bringing it home to me. And I'd just like to remind you that we do have to think larger than just Lakeland. The statistics right now, Florida, we are fifth in the nation for COVID cases. And Florida is also 19th in the world for COVID cases. So try and wrap your brains around that a little bit and expand what's really going on here. And I love Lakeland. I love how it's small, but we cannot handle what New York is going through. We cannot handle what Italy has gone through. Our, you know, Lakeland Regional is one of the best hospitals. They will be inundated if we do not get this under control. So I urge you, please, lock it down. We wish that people would take personal responsibility, but if that were so, we wouldn't have this increased curve. We wouldn't have had people swarming our state for spring break. So please, it's not just my life, it's the lives of my family. Thank you for your time.
We agree very much, and thank you for your comments. Next caller.
Yes, my name is, hi, are you there?
Yes, we are sure here, and just state your name, please, sir.
Okay, my name is David Two, T-E-W. And my concern is with y'all not locking the city down, for lack of a better term. Let's say, you know, people go out on the trail, somebody sneezes or coughs, now somebody inhales that, they bring it home, now somebody gets sick. We need to lock everything down for at least two weeks so we can get a grip on this to stop the spread. And from what I'm seeing here, everybody's arguing, oh, we can just wipe down our golf carts. It's, it's bigger than that. We need to lock everything down and kill this thing as quick as we can. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, David, and our, our goal really is to try and help to kind of define where we are there. Okay, go ahead, next caller. Uh, is the next caller on?
Uh, we're not sure if it's.
There you go. I can hear you guys, sir. Can you just state your name?
Uh, my name is Timothy Darby. We've actually met before.
Yes, we have, sir.
As, as well as many of us. So, um, there are lots of things that I would like to say. First of all, thank you to all of you, especially Palmer, as he reads through some vague statement from the governor. But, um, as my wife works at a pharmacy right now, um, in the heart of this, I have two sons at home. I'm not able to work other than remotely. Public opinions and the previous caller, um, dozens of people don't state the actual opinion of your city. Total disclosure, I do not live in the city nor do I have a boat. That's why we all like each other. As far as golf being a mandatory activity, absolutely not. It is not. And I love golf. I grew up on the golf course that's being discussed. However, um, it must be, in my opinion, an all-or-nothing approach because you cannot have people walking around Lake Collinsworth in an affluent neighborhood because they can all access that and then not allow that certain activity either at other public areas, Dempsey Park and other, other places. So really, that's, that's all my comments. Uh, Commissioner Franklin, the common sense approach makes the most sense to me, but I'm just one. However, that, either it's all or nothing or the common sense approach. And regardless, I respect your decision and I respect all of you as well as your thoughtfulness and all the extra work that this has taken in order to address this issue. And yes, we are in new, in, in a new world right now.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate your comments very much. Are there any other callers, Kevin?
Uh, yes, I believe I am.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Uh, yes, my name's Renee Clayton. My name's Renee Clayton, and I have been quite vocal on your social media platforms. My first comment was about son-in-law, and I realized at that point, whenever I had called around to some facilities, they weren't testing at all, and that was just three weeks ago. And if we're going to keep anything open, there has to be more testing confirmed in order to allow that kind of laxity. My husband works for the surgical center on the same block as Lakeland Regional, and I told him that he is going to have to prepare because Lakeland Regional is going to take over that building. And it's really sad that we have the opportunity to stop this. Once we get through testing, by all means, go back and talk about open space again. But this all needs to be stopped. Everything needs to be stopped. Once you get the testing done, that's when you can reevaluate the situation. Because I'm working from home, my husband's going to the center, he's getting stuff done, but as well as the other caller, he's coming back here and possibly infecting me and my family, and he could also get sick as well because he has underlying conditions. So with that being said, it's for the greater good to pause now. And once you have fluid testing and rapid testing, you can reevaluate the situation and open up the parks. That's probably one thing that should be opened up first because people are going to want to get outside. We don't want to be like Italy. We don't want crime on the rise. We know that people in prisons are being released because of the situation, so we have to consider those two. I've reached out to Grady Judd and asked him, and he says whatever is going down the pipe is what they follow. And if Lakeland and Grady Judd can work together, then I can understand a lockdown being completely successful.
Renee, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Any additional callers, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I can't, the, earlier we saw them and I just don't see them now on the screen.
Okay, caller, state your name, please.
Yes, good day, Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Gus Palace, and I'd like to thank you all for your service to our good city. I'll be brief on my comments. I'd just like to reiterate the same position that I took Monday at your meeting, that I support your original decision that you made on March the 23rd. And closing all nonessential facilities, I encourage you to maintain your original position for the protection of our public health and make a motion today to rescind your changes that you made on Monday. I believe this is an imperative to support our first responders. As the chief mentioned, there are priorities for our first responders, and encourage you to honor your original position, which was taken on March 23rd. Again, thank you so very much for your service and our prayers to you and the city.
Thank you, and to you and your family. Additional caller? Yes, sir.
Caller, you're on.
Hello, this is, uh.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is Joe Child.
Hi, Joe.
And, hey, thank you all very much for being thoughtful in your considerations. As looking through the governor's orders and he's referred back to the CISA document that describes essential critical infrastructure workforce, and in there, it provides a provision that states that individual jurisdictions should add or subtract essential workforce categories based on their own requirements and discretion. I would just encourage the commission at its maybe agenda study to, to consider what process you might use, should there be any elaboration on those various workforce categories. I know that in some of the businesses I've talked to, there's, they're open to interpretation as to what might be essential and what not, might not be essential. So it'd be helpful for the commission and the city manager to, to come up with a process by which these things could be adjudicated.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Joe also submitted a letter to you guys and to City Manager Tony Delgado that wanted to be read into the record. Is that something you'd want to do now or afterwards?
Read it into the record, that's fine, sir, please. It's a good spot to do it.
Joe, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to read your, your letter into the record, please?
Well, I think, um, I'll read a portion of the letter because the, the governor's actions, I think, took care of most of my concerns. So the sentiment was that we should collaborate with the, with the county, and if the county doesn't want to collaborate with us, maybe take some sort of action that the city manager might do to move toward a paper-at-home type of policy. But one additional comment that I would like to read is this. It's part of the letter, and it says, "We all know how important a vibrant economy fueled by free enterprise contributes to human flourishing, the standard of living, and public health. Hence, we need to do all we can to preserve our economic infrastructures. Our economy is made up of people and our survival should be our priority. And if you haven't already done so or had any considerations to do this, I think it would be helpful to appoint or convene some sort of impartial committee to help coordinate the efforts of various agencies such as the CRA, L-BDA, SCORE, SDC, et cetera, as well as member organizations such as LEDC, the Chamber, Bridge." as well as member organizations such as LEDC, the Chamber, Bridge, et cetera, and the various educational institutions that we have in our community to collaborate on an outreach to help businesses, nonprofits, service organizations, et cetera, on the best practices on how to pivot, sustain, and recover from their operations. Not only do we have a public health crisis, but we have an economic crisis coming ahead. And as I think Commissioner Franklin had said in previous meetings, we need to keep both in mind. So I think we, at some point, should be putting some effort into, um, concentrating on how to preserve our economic, um, security as well."
Thank you very much, Dr. Childs. Um, next caller, please, sir.
Caller, please state your name. There you go.
Yes, hello?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Fatima Pete. And hi, I just want to say that, um, I've been in Lake, I've been living in Lakeland for four years. I'm originally from New York City. And I don't think that we're really taking this seriously. I really think that, you know, living in New York City, you ride the subways, you ride the buses because you have to use, um, public transportation. In Florida, you don't. You drive everywhere. You go to the parks, you enjoy the outside. But I think that we need to close the parks. All parks need to be closed for our safety. Like Commissioner Walker said, this should have been done weeks before. Like, it needs to be closed. I mean, like, Boeing walking Lake Hollingsworth is great. It's beautiful. But when you guys originally closed the parks, it got very crowded there. And I was walking, and I was like, I don't need to walk here anymore because I'm feeling unsafe here. And I think we have to realize that, you know, we're taking all of this for granted. This is very serious. By the time you your meeting is done, we're all going to turn to CNN, and we're going to see that there's over 5,000 people in the United States that have died from this virus. This COVID-19 is very serious. Like, we really need to take public safety very serious. And I mean, I appreciate what you guys are doing, but it just needs to be taken seriously. It's like, this is short term. We can't walk Lake Hollingsworth short term. I'd rather not walk Lake Hollingsworth than God forbid have a family member pass away from this and you can't even go to the hospital to say your last goodbye because you're not allowed because this virus is so serious. So I think we really need to, you know, think about this. Like, this is very, very serious. And we live here in Lakeland. It's a small community. And, you know, this this people will come from everywhere. Everyone everyone loves Florida. So we need to shut down our our parks, all parks. It's not that important.
Thank you very much for your perspective. Appreciate it. And our next caller?
Please state your name.
Hello?
Yes, state your name, please.
Oh, Don Arnold.
Hi, Don. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, um, I've been listening to this, and I was very surprised when you all changed your, uh, your kind of the the, uh, guidance that you were offering to the public. Uh, it's really, uh, a leadership issue. That should never have happened. And, um, I'm quite surprised, especially when you hear governors like, uh, Como saying, uh, how that when you think you're on top of it, you're behind. So right now, you're actually behind. And if you think this decision, if you make it, is not going to follow you around, you're wrong. So that's a two cents.
Don, thanks very much, and we are sobered as well. So I appreciate your comments. The next caller, please.
Caller, state your name.
Yes, my name is Tyrus Hawkins.
And how do you spell your first name, sir?
T Y R U S.
Thank you.
And, uh, first off, thank you all for allowing me to speak. Um, I am an executive director at an assisted living facility, um, here in Lakeland, uh, Grand Villa of Lakeland. And we're licensed for 85 beds. We both have assisted living, and then we also have memory care. And to put it in perspective, as far as from a healthcare standpoint, which we are, the reason why we're here, um, is related to healthcare. And with our seniors being the most vulnerable, uh, population, um, we're struggling here because, and it's every day, um, each and every day, our staff members come to and from work. Our residents have to stay in their rooms. We're talking 280 square feet of living space. Some of that living space is shared. And the longer that this virus, um, filters throughout our community, we don't take it serious. Uh, we don't do the little things that we have, um, you know, control of. It puts these 85 residents, which I have all 85 here, all 85 residents, um, at risk. And it also puts our staff at risk. And I just want you all to look at it from a healthcare standpoint. Um, I know you all have, you know, different, um, areas and different information that you all look at, and you make your decisions upon. But, um, from a healthcare standpoint, and just from the elderly population who we are, um, focused on and worried about the most, um, please take into consideration that, and just go ahead and shut it down as quickly as possible so that way we can go ahead and and knock this thing out and and move on, because it is very difficult for us. It really is. Um, and and also just get out there and get into the assisted livings, get into the nursing homes, hear from those healthcare providers, because it's serious. And we're all scared. We're all stressed, and it is it's huge for us. So I just want you all to take that into consideration.
I appreciate your comments very much, Senator. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Emily Oak. Um, I just want to bring up about the Lake Hollingsworth situation. So I live right up off Lake Hollingsworth. I have most of my life. I grew up here. And I love to run the lake. I run almost every day, well, now since the gyms are closed. And I would be really sad if they shut it down, but at this point, like, when I go down there in the evenings, I wait till people are gone. But in the afternoons, I have never seen it like this before. I don't even know if they're allowed to park the way that they're parking. There's so many people. They are not observing six feet. There's no way. You can't pass people without keeping, without violating six feet. Like, I just think at this point, even just from a public safety standpoint, it's not a good idea to have that many people down there. So that's just all I have to say.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it very much. The next caller, sir? Are you on?
Hello?
Yes, if you could just state your name, please.
Yes, Debbie Hall.
Hi, Debbie. Go ahead.
Hi, I just want, I just wanted to say that, um, I really appreciate Commissioner McCarley and her, what she has to say. I I definitely don't think that parks, boat ramps, golfing, none of that is as important as a human life. And so it may inconvenience a few people to not be able to go walk Lake Hollingsworth or play golf or take their boat out on a lake, but that's all stuff that can be done at any time. A human life is way more important. And if it means not doing it for 15 days, 30 days, that's a small, small thing to ask for.
Yes.
Um, I don't think shutting it down is going to kill anyone, but I think leaving it open can. And I I just, as far as the exercising goes, I believe, you know, sidewalks, yards, driveways, your living room, you can exercise in any of these places. You don't have to go to Lake Hollingsworth to exercise. You don't have to go to a golf course to get exercise or fresh air. That's all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for your comments. Next caller, please. If you could state your name.
Yes, go ahead. State your name.
Hi there. My name is Samantha Caban. Um, I work in downtown Lakeland. Um, so thank you for taking the time to listen to us today and recalling this. Um, I am also, uh, the VP of the Dixieland Neighborhood. Um, I do appreciate you guys sitting here and talking to us. I have to say, I am pretty disappointed in the choice in the first place, but I do appreciate, um, the turnaround and you guys actually listening to the community. That's very important. Um, I just want to let you guys know something. Yes, of course, of course. We are all in this together. I'm a Lakeland native, born and raised. I've lived all over this country. I decided to come back home and, um, live here anyway. So I love this town. Anyway, I just want to say, in the downtown area, um, because we're taking away the tables, we're taking away things, of course, um, there's a huge homeless population, and they are making their way into local businesses. And it is dangerous, and, um, people out there are getting crazy. I talk to people every single day. The fear is there. Everyone's afraid. Everyone's nervous. And I do my best in life to sit there and try to be the voice of reason, try to be that positivity. However, um, I I think that, um, I'm out there in the public every single day. Um, these people are coming in, someone to prove a point, lick their fingers before touching our surfaces at work. You know, things like this should not be happening. It's hard to trust the community when things like this are happening, when people have to prove a point. Um, so anyway, I appreciate you guys for listening. I just wanted to put in my two cents. You know, I I work in downtown Lakeland, where the hub of everything is happening. That's where the walkable areas are happening. That's where people are hanging out. That's where the homeless population coming in to use the bathrooms and and it and it is, it it makes us nervous. So I appreciate you guys revisiting this idea, and I just hope that we could possibly in the future maybe look for even more things that we can do as a community to slow this down. You guys have heard so many things. I'm going to listen until this is done. I will.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
And I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Um, the next caller, are you on? And if you so, state your name, please. Can you just state your name, please?
State your name. Hello? You're on.
I think they dropped.
Okay, I'm going to go to the next one. I'm in death spin. Uh-oh.
A death spin?
Yeah, my, I can't click on the caller. I'm in spin. My computer's locked up.
That's in the computer. Do you see, um, any callers? Oh, I see two callers left, 38 and 39.
Yep. I can't do anything.
Can you turn them on audio-wise?
I can't do anything. I apologize. We have two other callers. I can't.
Okay, callers 38 and 39, which we see. If you'd hang up and, uh, call in again, if you can hear me, uh, talking, that that would be great. Okay, there's 39 left. 38 is still on. If you could hang up and then call back in again, let's see if that will help. You may not be able to hear.
No, my 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 entire computer's locked up, so I can't do anything.
All right. Well, let's continue. Let's continue then, um, with, um, discussing this and from the having listened to the, uh, input from, uh, citizens, what are some comments any commissioners would like to make as we kick off the discussion? Commissioner McCloud?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think, um, I think it makes sense to add to Commissioner Madden's, uh, motion, all parks and trails, paths, um, with the enforcement challenges that we've talked about, um, the time, uh, that we're spending on this. Um, I I think, doing so, it doesn't mean people can't get out and walk and exercise in their neighborhoods. But we already know that we have large crowds that are congregating in many of these places. And so I think, looking at that, that it makes sense, uh, to add those into, uh, her motion and include all parks and trails, paths.
So I would ask Commissioner Madden if you would be willing to amend your amendment already, which would include all parks and trails. Or do you want to leave your motion at stance?
Okay, so it would just be closing all parks?
Closing all parks, all trails.
Okay, um, that I would not prefer to make that motion, but I would I would let someone else make that motion.
Well, we have to vote on this one first. We'll have to vote on this one first. Okay, so.
I could ask to rescind my motion?
You could rescind your motion if, uh, Commissioner Franklin would agree.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so if we've agreed with that, Commissioner Walker?
I make a motion that we close all parks as effectively immediately or as best that it can be done within the, uh, I guess, the parameters of what I said the manager could have, uh, have to do.
And that would include Lake Hollingsworth, Simpson Park, everything, all the walking. Yeah, very good. And is there a second?
Boat ramps are included within parks.
Every everything closes, is what it announces. Does, uh, is there a second? Commissioner McCloud? Okay. Uh, city manager Delgado.
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners. Uh, understanding the motion, does that include Munn Park as a downtown location?
Hmm, that is a good question. Uh, what would your recommendation be on that, um, as the city manager?
Um, it, uh, obviously, and I hope you can hear me, uh, obviously, Munn Park seems to be more of a downtown, um, area and not necessarily used as a park as you would, as you would recognize a walking park, a running park, uh, a playground. There's no playground equipment there. It would be my recommendation, because if it's a, it's a thoroughfare between businesses and on streets, that Munn Park would remain open.
Okay, um, would you, Commissioner Walker, would you have a problem with excluding Munn Park? And then Commissioner McCloud, if he doesn't?
I would have, I have, I need some dialogue, uh, uh, Mr. Delgado.
Um, if being open, will we still have the challenge that we have heard from, uh, I guess, you know, was it Julia Townsend, LDDA, saying about the congregation of different ones in that particular vicinity? Uh, would it present a problem for us trying to make sure we can manage or?
Uh, Commissioner Walker, currently today, we're, the the real impact has to be with our homeless and transit population. Obviously, today, we're trying to manage that with LPD support. Uh, we removed all the table and chair sets there, which helped out a lot because we were having a lot of people, uh, take dine out or carry out to that location. Um, and I can tell you, over the last day, since I've driven by the last day and a half since we've done that, uh, the 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 amount of people utilizing that park has been minimized. However, if 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 the commission felt that it needed to be closed, we would have to fence the entire park off, and we're more than happy to do it. But it's also used as a thoroughfare from block to block in downtown.
Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
May I still continue?
Yes, please.
All right. Well, if if it could be managed, poss- uh, properly, proper, you know, properly, and and also controlled as it would be. I don't want to cause any disruption with their affair, going back and forth, that kind of thing. But if I hear what you're saying, Mr. Delgado, we do have minimized as far as the number, I guess, folk just hanging, uh, hanging around or being in the park, then I can go along with what your suggestion would be.
Commissioner McCloud, would you agree?
Yes, I was just going to say, Tony, under the state of emergency that we're in, you have the authority as city manager to make some of those, I think, decisions. And so I would, um, I'd look to you in that. If you come back to us and there's a problem, you know, happy to chat through that. But I I trust your expertise on that one.
And so you would agree with the sec-?
Yeah, yes.
It's Munn Park. Uh, Commissioner Franklin?
Okay, I want to make sure I understood that. Are you saying that we would make an exception for Munn Park? Is that what the motion would include?
Yes, the motion would leave Munn Park out of the closings.
Well, I'm, I still am eager to hear the rest of the dialogue here, but I can't for the life of me understand why we'd possibly leave Munn Park open. It serves no purpose recreationally. And if the businesses are closed down, I'm not sure who's cutting across, but even if they are going to cut across, they could walk around the perimeter of it without going through the middle of the park. So I don't really get that one. But, um, I I guess my question for for Tony, or the chief even, is how feasible is it if we say we're going to shut down places like Lake Mirror and Lake Hollingsworth? Can you do that?
Uh, I'll, from a, from an operational standpoint, obviously, we're going to have to put a lot of fencing up around, at entry points on Lake Mirror, Lake Hollingsworth, uh, Lake Morton, though Lake Morton is a little bit tougher because they have sidewalks that, uh, public sidewalks that, uh, handle the perimeter on the outside of of that. And we don't normally see people other than those, uh, enjoying the lake and the and the waterfowl that are there. Uh, but we would have to go ahead and add additional fencing to all those, uh, parks. And we can do the same for Munn Park. I I only brought it up because even though that many non-essential businesses are closed, they're keeping rest based upon the executive order that I read, uh, you're still able to get dine out and takeout and and those type of things. based upon the executive order that I read, uh, you're still able to get dine out and takeout and, and those type of things. So some of the restaurants will obviously be open around, around Munn Park. But we can also close that, Commissioner. I, I was just putting it out there for food for thought.
Commissioner McCrally?
Well, just, just one other thing. I'd still go back to what I've been saying all along, though. I think whatever we do with this, I really wanna see some strong teeth in it, and I don't know that we need to put up three and a half miles of chain link fence around Lake Hollingsworth in order to block it off. I say, once it's closed down and we've got cones in the parking lots, then police issue citations and make them as severe as we can possibly make them, if that's the direction we go.
From our Parks and Rec Director, Bob Donahue, any thoughts on that? I think I see them in your face.
Uh, Mr. Delgado and I, and the chief also have been discussing a plan, if it's your wish and it is okay with, uh, Mr. Delgado, we would do is use temporary fencing that we have. Obviously, we rented some for screen training, uh, that we have on a tire town right now. Uh, uh, more discussions with my meetings with MLB and the Tigers, they don't have a timeframe yet either on what they're gonna do. We would use temporary fencing that we have out of Tire Town and use pinch points around the lake to, um, fence off over to the roadside and to the lakeside of different areas, post signs. And then with the help of Chief Garcia and LPD, uh, he would provide some patrolling to remind people that the lake is closed. Uh, anything that we did, as Mr. Delgado alluded to earlier, would be through temporary fencing, not as a perimeter, but in different pinch points to minimize the cost of the fencing. Uh, so we have been looking at several plans and, and talking about this for a couple of weeks, to be honest with you.
Commissioner McCrally, thank you, Senator. Commissioner McCrally.
Uh, first, Kevin Cook and I have been texting. His computer's locked up, so he just wanted that as an FYI. That's why he had to step away from his desk and figure out how to call back in. Um, my question is, in, in the original staff recommendation from, I don't know what day it is, to tell you how many weeks ago that was when we first voted on this, what was that inclusive of, that, that the staff came to us and shared about this? And did it include Munn Park and did it include some of these parks that we would use temporary fencing? Yeah, Tony, that's a question for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this, the original staff recommendation understood that there would be, Lake Hollingsworth as a trail would remain omen, opened. And we assumed that Lake Mirror, Lake Morton and Munn Park, because of their proximity and the inability to go ahead and physically lock them down. If you remember, we talked about parks that we could physically lock down, like Lake Parker, Lake Bonnie, uh, those type of parks, they would remain open too. But in light of the new executive order, we're really at your disposal.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? Um, so we're gonna vote on, and any comments from the audience, by the way? Uh, oh yeah, Commissioner, first of all, there's commissioners. So Commissioner Madden and then Commissioner Reed.
Yes, I, I am not going to support this motion, um, but even if I were, I would never support keeping Munn Park open. That's one of the biggest, um, places where there's egregious gatherings. So I don't, I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Franklin. I don't know why Munn Park is even in consideration. It's not even for recreational use. The whole point is that even in the most shut down states, you are allowed to exercise as an essential activity. And I'd love to give a shout out to one of the callers, Andre. I know him personally. I'm proud of his young civic action. But he has one voice and he agrees with a lot of people on social media, but for his one, there's a thousand people who believe the way I'm gonna vote, and that's why I'm gonna vote this way, because we have seven commissioners voting for all different perspectives and all different people, and we wouldn't have a problem at Lake Hollingsworth if other people didn't want to be out exercising their free, their freedom, their right for essential activity to get fresh air and exercise during this time. So I'm not supporting the motion, but I certainly am not supportive of keeping, um, Munn Park open.
Uh, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. There again, um, I need a clarification. In, in Phillip's motion, he said all parks. There again, Cleveland Heights is not a park. Lake Hollingsworth is not a park. Lake Morton is not a park, nor is Lake Mirror a park. Munn Park is a park. Uh, and of course, there again, while we've had this dialogue going on, I've had a, a better chance to read through our executive order. And of course, in part, uh, three, and see, it's, uh, public space is not essential activity. There again, people can walk around their neighborhoods and stuff like that. And, uh, I need to get a clarification from Phillip, what he means about those particular items that I did address.
Commissioner Walker?
We decided as a commission, some, several years back, that the golf course would become a park. And it was placed under our Parks and Recreation Department. That was done some, maybe, help me out, Mr. Donahue, but because we had that public, uh, kind of a, um, I guess, kind of a talk about, you know, the money we've been losing on Cleveland Heights and, and doing our budget discussion some several years back. You know, the commission then decided, well, you know, because it, we put it under the Parks and Recreation Division or Department, so people can understand, you're just like swimming, just like tennis, just like whatever actually it may be, that's in a, in a park, is a park. So I will have to share with you, unless I'm just been in these last number of years and thought incorrectly, but we did that, did we not, Mr. Donahue?
Yes, sir, you're correct. Uh, uh, Commissioner Reed is a good friend of mine. I hate to disagree with you, sir, but all those areas that you listed are all classified as parks.
So again, that's why I mentioned all parks. In that vein, Commissioner Reed, because I know we did that, and Cleveland Heights became a park, became a part of the park, um, uh, you know, purview, uh, Parks and Recreation Department purview. Uh, so when I say all parks, um, and the only reason why I have allowed myself to, um, amend or to, 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 uh, go along with what the city manager said, in light of what I think, um, Commissioner McLeod has said as well, if he's saying that he has, on his purview, uh, wanted to make Lake, uh, make Munn Park an exception to some extent, because what activity business-wise is, uh, that may cause, I, I, the only reason why I say, okay, I can go along with that, um, but even at that, that's a park too. I, I understand that.
Commissioner Reed.
Uh, Bob, do you consider Lake Morton and Lake Mirror parks?
Yes, sir, it is. They're all classified as parks.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Coming from McCrally.
Um, just an FYI, if Kevin's computer shuts down, the whole meeting shuts down. And it, I don't know if Tony's getting that text, but Kevin was texting me just as an FYI.
Oh, that's a good thing to note, because I would have actually told him to do the reset.
Yeah, Kevin was texting me. I told him to get somebody down there right away. We're trying to keep this meeting going, so.
In fact, I probably wouldn't play with it because the thing you would do is Ctrl+Alt+Delete it, and that'll unplug us. So, um, Kevin's can join us somewhere else if he'd like. What I, um, I'm troubled also, I just want to mention from my perspective, at making Munn Park an exception. I think if we're gonna do what we should do unilaterally, unilaterally, let's just do it. And if it's a park, it's closed. And then we don't have any issues of why we have to do anything any differently. Um, so, uh.
Mr. Mayor, we have no, we have no concern about that. If that, if that's the, uh, the, uh, what the commission would like to do, we're more than happy to make that happen.
I'd have to go back then to Commissioner Walker. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. We do, we would include Munn Park as well.
All right, Commissioner McLeod?
I was just gonna, since I seconded his motion, I was going to second that as well.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on this? All right, any converse, any, yes, sir, Commissioner Franklin? Uh, you're on mute still, sir. Sorry.
Just one other point. In, in light of, of the feedback we've had and understanding the complexity of enforcing things, the such, you know, some of it being selective, some open, some closed, and the, and the challenges that presents, I am, I am gonna go ahead and support the motion. But I do want to say to all those who think that social media is the be all and all, thinking just need to remember that we've got thousands of people that are walking these trails every day. Every single one of those folks by definition thinks it's okay to do that. So I, I, I think it's, people drink their own Kool-Aid on social media and think that because they have a hundred or two hundred people that agree with them, that they think they've got, that they've cornered the market on common sense. And this is a very contentious issue, but I don't see an easy way to, um, to do it without just shutting things down.
I, I concur. Commissioner, uh, City Manager Delgado? And then Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, one other thing, and obviously Palmer more than likely will have to go ahead and, and take a look at this after you make your vote. But we do know on Lake Hollingsworth, there are some private riparian rights associated with some of the docks based on Lake Hollingsworth. So Palmer, we're going to have to kind of get an idea and wrap our hands around, um, how that works out if there's a closing of the, of the park.
Right. And one other, one other, one other issue that needs to be addressed is the timing of this order. When, when would it go into effect?
Uh, how long would it take, um, Mr. Donahue to be able to affect this from your perspective?
I'm thinking a week, to be honest with you. Without a formulation of plans, no, like versus Lake Hollingsworth, as you guys just re- uh, referred to, there's riparian rights there. Uh, one of the pinch points that we talked about, like is somewhere around the yacht club, is making contact with them, explaining what we're gonna do, getting the permission to go from a corner of their boundary line out to the roadway, back to the lake. So if you give me a week to formulate how many feet of fencing we'll need and, and be able to do those things and be able to construct it, uh, we're gonna put all our resource on it and try to accomplish it as quickly as possible. But I, I would appreciate if you would give me up to a week to accomplish a lot of these areas.
Uh, Commissioner Walker?
Some would be quicker than others.
Oh, yeah, and I would, I would, I would say, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Dan. And let me, let me share, I have no way, and I don't think you would think this either, but I have no way to make my motion.
Everybody.
What I guess Facebook or, and all that other stuff is, it's not that. I made my motion based on what I believe is publicly correct for our citizens and the public health and safety of our citizens. Um, and not saying that people may think differently, because I've got calls, as many as you all have too, and you'll think that I'm off the chain. But seriously, that's where I am. And I would ask then, yes, it may take time to do some fencing or do some things we need to do for, uh, some of these particular areas. But I think our, uh, this bit of motion, if it's passed, goes into effect immediately and the public is advised. And we tell folk, you know, all parks are closed, and if we see that they're still doing what they should not be doing, that we have, you know, law enforcement to say, hey, give them a warning or whatever, to, that they know that, you know, these places are closed effectively immediately.
The, the difficulty, Commissioner Walker, is that it can, it can't be posted if it isn't closed. And if we get it closed, then they can post it. So maybe we could make the language be as posted, so that that way much of this could be affected right away. But, um, some of it, that may take some time, uh, to get done, uh, until they have that, those pinch points in, um, and then, and can post, that that's when it would become effective. Does that make sense or?
Makes sense, but I, I would say as, as, as it, you know, so as we could get and make it happen, I would think that's where I would be.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, City Manager Delgado?
Um, uh, understanding Bob's dilemma with trying to physically close the park, that does not mean we can't post signage, have that posted very quickly, uh, by, you know, I guess we got till midnight Thursday when this executive order goes into place. So by Friday, have signage posted, so people understand this park is closed and we can do the physical, um, uh, closure, a- a- as if that is the, uh, the, the request of the commission and what's ratified, we can do that as we go from park to park.
Okay, that's what I'm talking, that's what I'm talking about, Mr. Mayor.
And I noticed that even in Tampa, when they closed the Curtis Hickson Park, um, while they couldn't get the fencing up right away, they still had park personnel out there just telling people it was closed. And, you know, while park personnel aren't normally or would be considered essential in some regard, maybe some will have to be considered essential because of the lack of being able to have police officers there twenty-four seven. Park personnel can roam, um, during the day to make sure people understand the park's closed.
Excellent. Any other commissioner comments? Are there any other call-in comments? Uh, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there again, I am going to support this, uh, vote. Um, as you're aware, in March twenty-six, I did vote to, uh, uh, keep the golf course and, and some of the trails closed. Subsequently, uh, uh, with, with our governor's proclamation of, of stay-at-home issues, I think it's imperative that we follow suit. Uh, of course, it was a big issue with me, more economic as well as health process. Uh, but, uh, uh, I'm going to vote in favor of this, uh, and rescind my vote that I had last week about the, the golf course and stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's all right. You know, it's, it's a changing crisis. That's right. It's okay, that's fair. All right, if there is no, uh, comments from the public, uh, then we'll do this as a roll call vote, and we'll start with Commissioner McCrally.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Nay.
Commissioner, um, uh, Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bill Muttz, Mayor?
Yes.
So, um, we, it passes five to one, and we are closing the parks as they can be implemented, effective immediately. We'll have some polishing we can do probably Friday of some other issues that may come up alongside that and the discussion on non-essential business that can be added to our agenda study as well. Uh, City Manager Delgado, any comments?
Uh, just really quickly, I know, you just said immediately. Would that be, uh, in line with the executive order, so by Thursday midnight?
Day night, right, yes.
That'll give Bob some time to get some signs out there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for that casual comment. Yes, that, we want to coincide with the executive order. Uh, any comments for the good of all? Listen, I know this has been a little bit difficult for us to go through and do, and we have had listening ears on, which is why it may have seemed longer to many people who are frustrated that we didn't just ask that, do that faster. And I think it is because we're also trying to balance a lot, what we are giving people the opportunity to do. I know there were many people who wanted trails like Three Parks Trail, uh, um, yeah, Three Parks Trails opened back up and are disappointed that's not happening, as an example, because it gave some other areas to go. But this is a time to be as drastic as necessary, and I think we have done the right thing. And I applaud you for that. Commissioner Reed?
There again, um, how long is this executive order for, till, till, uh, the thirtieth of April?
Yes, sir.
I believe it does go till thirtieth of April. That's a fair statement.
As, as it is today, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you know, some people are asking, how long do you think we have to think about regrouping and, and living life like this? Um, frankly, I'll tell you what I'm thinking in my own life. I'm thinking of living life like this until we get to June sometime. And so, you know, we'll take these things as they go along, but I think it's a mistake to think, oh, we'll be two weeks and we're gonna be okay. You know, we're gonna be a month and we're gonna be okay. We have to watch the numbers. And until we see rescinding numbers or after the plateau on this in Florida where we live, uh, we're gonna have to live accordingly, and we're going to learn to live differently as we already have, even more severely. And, um, so in that, I look for ways to try and do some things differently than I normally would do, you know, and, and to find some other activities. Haven't had a lot of opportunity to do that frankly in the last week, but I'm anticipating that we can do some of those things at home. So be creative and I would encourage that. And any other comments? Thank you for being outstanding people to work with. I, I really truly mean that. And I see City Manager Delgado a comment.
Um, I think there's a second item on your agenda, and that is regarding providing Ruben Garcia and police the, uh, uh, this, some additional responsibilities and authorities, sir.
What, didn't we really help to, um, accommodate that with the governor's order?
If, if you allow us to follow that governor's order, uh, that's something Palmer can put into the, whatever we have to provide you.
Yeah, I think the penalties are already in place, primarily a second degree misdemeanor for a violation of an emergency order.
And Commissioner Franklin, are you good with that? Uh, you're muted still. Yes, go ahead.
As long as we actually use it, utilize that tool, and people understand that, that we will use it.
We are going to use it. Agreed? That, that's really a question for you, City Manager.
No, no, obviously, we, we want to use it, and, you know, as we always do in Lakeland, our hope is to discuss it with the people and make sure that they understand, and hopefully they'll disperse. discuss it with the people and make sure that they understand, and hopefully they'll disperse, obviously, if they don't disperse, we'll use the authority that you provided us.
Very good, thank you, uh, is there any, are any other matters to be brought up? Is there a motion to adjourn? This is new, and, and a second from, uh, Commissioner Walker, or, and McCarthy, okay, all those in favor, hold up your thumb, all those opposed, by same, unanimously passes. Thank you very much for your time, thank you for your flexibility meeting today, thank you for your leadership along the way, and I know that it's been painstaking, but it's good, thanks.